All right, you've got six to go ahead and call those four. Do you stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to thank everyone for their attendance. And if the minutes can reflect the attendance of the various trustees and staff, let's move on to item three. Entertained motion for approval of the three, two village board meeting minutes and five of the one, nine, twenty twenty architectural review board, twelve seventeen, twenty nineteen planning commission, the one twenty seven, twenty twenty joint library board, the two, three, twenty twenty finance committee, two ten, twenty twenty board of public works, and the two eleven, twenty twenty public safety committee meeting minutes as presented.
Make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Has all those comments, questions, clarifications on the minutes? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hearing opposed? That motion passes. Any item four, anybody in the audience wishing to be heard on the non-adjournant item? Okay, with that being said, let's move on to item five. This is presented by the president's. We have a couple items. First, a quick update on activities taken by the village board and staff so far. The biggest, just wanted to let everybody know, we've been addressing the rapidly changing situation that's going on with the coronavirus situation. Jesse and I have pretty much been in daily contact since the beginning of the month. As of today, and I will leave the bulk of the details for Jesse to give in his update, but as of today, we did sign a proclamation, identifying a public health emergency in the village of Grafton. This is basically a follow-up as this is done by the county, and the county is recommending all the local municipalities follow suit. And what that does is allows us to take advantage of any FEMA funds or any other grants as they may come. So that is, that was just done today, and as far as the other major updates, as far as the activities, what we've done, and what we plan on doing, I'll leave that. Jesse and I have worked on that, and he will be presenting that in his statements. Let's move on to temporary amendments. So in the packet was an updated agenda, an amended agenda, including an item for consideration, which is a temporary amendment to the medical leave bank policy. And again, this is in direct response to the current conditions that are impacting our other staff. So Jesse, you want to take that one?
Absolutely. This temporary revision is actually being brought forward. So the employee handbook is an adopted policy document. Therefore, any changes, whether temporary or permanent, must be approved by the village board. That said, in a way to help address the recent school closures and what we are assuming to be pending daycare facility closures, looking to provide flexibility to employees with regards to leave time available to them in order to care for their children. I did have an IFC on the dais this evening outlining how employees accrue PTO time, paid time off. So you'll notice there are caps in annual limit, or excuse me, just an accrual limit to the paid time off that an employee may accrue. Once an employee crests said max limit, those hours then go into a medical leave bank, or MLB. The personnel manual specifically sets forth the employee may only use those medical leave bank hours for FMLA or Family Medical Leave Act qualifying events, medical care for themselves, medical care for a spouse, et cetera. It does not allow for childcare. With that, again, as I mentioned, to help provide flexibility during this trying time, I would like to bring forward a temporary revision that would set forth the following. Eligible employees may request to use accumulated medical leave bank hours for non-FMLA qualifying childcare during school closures caused by a declared public health emergency. Said request may not cause a village department to drop below their established minimum staffing level. This is worded very specifically to avoid any potential for abuse of this temporary policy amendment, but again, to help provide additional flexibility. Employees do have their PTO that they accrue. Employees do have comp time that they accrue. However, we are looking at right now a extended period of time in which schools will be closed and the potential for closure of daycare facilities as well, which would add to the issues at hand. So that said, again, it's a flexibility tool that I'm bringing forward for the village board's consideration.
Okay, thank you. And again, this is a little bit of amendment to the agenda based on a rapidly changing, basically day by day. So I approve this to be included in tonight's agenda for discussion and review. Basically, again, as an opportunity for us to provide an additional relief component for our staff based on the fact that the schools have now made a decision to go ahead and close. So I know it's late, so if anybody has any questions you want to ask, now I'll open it up.
I have a question. Do you know approximately how many employees might be utilizing this?
No. Anecdotally, I know we have a handful of police officers, public works employees. Here in Village Hall, we have one employee in particular that may utilize this. But again, I do not have a specific head count on it, no.
Other questions? That being said, I'll entertain a motion to approve the temporary revision to the medical leave bank policy as presented and for it to remain in effect for the duration of the Grafton School District's public health-related closure.
I'll make the motion.
Motion is second. Final comments, questions? Hearing not all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Let's move on to item six, resolutions, ordinance, action items. We have one tonight, and that's a resolution commending police officer Daniel Radke on his retirement and years of service. So I will leave you six feet apart. So what we do when we have milestone events, such as the retirement of people that have been long-serving and in well stead with the community and staff of the village of Grafton, we'd like to honor them with a resolution of commendation. And this is a resolution commending police officer Daniel Radke on his retirement and for his years of service to the village of Grafton. And I'll read the first couple and the last. Whereas Daniel Radke is retired from the village of Grafton employment on May 2nd, 2020, after having diligently served the people of the village of Grafton and community. And whereas Daniel began his employment with Grafton Police Department on January 23rd, 1991, now therefore be it resolved that the village board of the village of Grafton does hereby acknowledge with sincere appreciation and gratitude the over 29 years of dedicated service that Daniel has provided to the community. And be it further resolved that the village board and the village staff of the village of Grafton do hereby wish Daniel the very best on his retirement and in all his future endeavors. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. You wish to say anything?
It's just been my pleasure to serve the village of Grafton for all the years that I did. I've had a wonderful career and met a lot of good people, and I hope I've helped a little bit, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move on to item B. For the finance committee, we have two items. Oh, yeah, okay. So it's a resolution, so it takes an offer motion and a second?
I will offer.
Motion.
Second.
Offer motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That resolution passes, so congratulations again. All right, let's move on to item B. Report of the finance committee. There's two items. A motion to approve revised fire inspection services memorandum of understanding with Soffield conditions upon the acceptance by the Soffield village board be approved.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Was discussed quite extensively at finance. Any questions on this extension? Hearing not all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Item two is a motion to approve the updated drug and alcohol-free workplace policy, including accidents that generate more than the, I'm going to change this, than the insurance deductible value of damages be approved.
That exceed the deductible?
It exceeds.
That it exceeds the deductible?
It exceeds the current deductible at the time of the event be approved. Got that? Excellent. All right, again, that went back and forth a couple times with a couple different revisions. I think we have it. Any questions on that? Entertained that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Final comments? Hearing not all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Move on to item C. Report of the board of public works. We have several capital purchases. I have one is a motion to approve a contract with TRC Environmental Corporation of a not-to-exceed contract in an amount of $50,000 for groundwater monitoring and associated work at Land Hill, Landville, and the West Boone area be approved.
Make the motion.
Second.
Amber, thirty seconds, comments?
Sure. This is just an ongoing project that we've been working on for about 20 years. We have had the same consultant for the last 20 years working on this project. So the goal with this is to hopefully get some new ideas, some new expertise in, and work towards closing out the project.
Okay, questions for Amber? Motion is second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Item two is a motion to abort contract 20 dash zero two, 2020 street improvement project to Copland and Keenness Company, Green Lake, Wisconsin, for a contract cost $1,162,472.32 be approved.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Numbers came in favorable?
They did. It would be, we're not looking at about $26,000 on your budget. This would be for reconstructing 13th Avenue from Washington to North and First Avenue from Highland to Washington.
Okay, questions on that? Hearing not all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Item three is a motion to authorize the purchase of a detachable rotor-mounted snow blower from Casper's Truck Equipment of Appleton, Wisconsin, in an amount of $129,174 be approved.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Questions on that? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Item four is a motion to authorize the purchase of a plow hitch, plow, and wing from Universal Truck Equipment of Galesville, Wisconsin, in an amount of $35,927 be approved.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Comments on that? Hearing not all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Item five is a motion to approve the 2019 stormwater annual report be approved?
Make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Highlight, Amber?
Sure. So there were no major changes with our stormwater reports this year. It's just kind of a summary of all the activities we've done for MS4 stormwater project over the last year. This is due to DNR on a yearly basis by the end of March. It will need to be approved by the board before we submit that.
Okay, thank you. Comments, questions? Hearing not all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Move on to item D. Report of the public safety committee. Item one is a motion to approve the Grafton Firefighters Association to sell by auction obsolete fire department equipment with proceeds going to the association as a fundraiser be approved.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
And this is everything except the cameras?
Yes.
Cameras and extrication.
Extrication.
Okay, okay, which goes back to the equipment fund?
Correct.
Okay. Do we get a motion second on that?
Yes.
Okay, motion second. Comments on that? Hearing not all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Item two is a motion to approve the acceptance of a DNR grant in an amount of $8,890.41 be approved.
Make the motion.
Second.
Okay, specific use that was for?
So this is part of the next one, two, three other items. This grant specifically is for the UTV that's listed in items three and four, and some of the components listed within that.
Right, and this also comes with a slight condition as far as a DNR request?
Yeah, there's definitely a timeframe on it. That's why, that's one of the conditions. It needs to be fulfilled shortly.
Okay, and then this also, they have the, maybe through like Mavis requests to?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Through request, the DNR could request us to go to another place in the state of Wisconsin.
Okay, questions for? Sorry.
Matt.
Sorry, slipped my mind. Any questions for Matt? All right, motion is second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. I have three is a motion to approve the purchase. We'll take items three and four and five together if we have consensus. They all kind of are bundled. Item three is a motion to approve the purchase of a 2020 John Deere UTV for a mid-state equipment in an amount of $17,786.23 be approved. Item four is a motion to approve fabrication installation of a fire pump, tank, snows carrier body from EJ Metals for that same UTV in the amount of $23,252 be approved. And item five is the trailer to approve a purchase of a 2020 Bravo 20-foot tandem axle cargo trailer from Miller Sales for $4,623 after trade-in of two existing fire department trailers be approved.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion is second for all those three items. Comments, questions? Hearing not all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Let's move on to department officers' reports. Jesse, take it away.
Absolutely. All righty. My report this evening is going to focus on the village's efforts regarding the public health crisis, also known as the coronavirus or COVID-19. Currently, village facilities are closed or in the process of closing. The senior center has been closed. All programming has been canceled. The library will be closing on Wednesday of this week with programming canceled. Their community room is also not available. Park and Recreation and Department of Public Works offices are closed to the public. Employees are reporting to conduct business by telephone, email, USPS snail mail, if you will. Park and Rec programming is canceled. Utility offices are closed to the public. Again, staff is reporting for work to conduct business, albeit electronically, by phone, et cetera. Meter installations, as part of the meter changeout program, have been postponed until later this year. New construction meter installs are still ongoing. However, we are keeping an eye on other communities as far as what they are doing with building inspection activities, because if those come to a halt, new construction meter installs would come to a halt. So there's a lot of domino effect here as we look to take these various actions. The police department's community room, all events there have been canceled with regards to public usage. Staff has been, we are also looking to, starting tomorrow, close Village Hall to the public except for requesting absentee ballots. Next week now starts the in-person absentee voting. That currently, under Wisconsin Election Commission guidelines, we will have to completely open up and allow full access for in-person absentee voting. So again, we are waiting on guidance from the state of Wisconsin with that. We are making every effort to provide materials in the entryway where people can stop by and pick up, call ahead and drop off, whether it be inspection or community development-related materials or clerk's office materials. Other payments, we have the Dropbox or online payments available via the website. That will be formalized tomorrow, but that is a response that came about late today. Staff has been advised that capital spending moving forward, except for such items that were approved and in the pipeline, so to speak, this evening, capital spending moving forward is on hold. Discretionary operational spending is significantly limited to those items that are needed for operations only. Training, that is being postponed, delayed, or canceled. Out-of-state training is not being permitted at this time. Staff continues to watch. There is federal law pending, which would provide employers give or provide to its employees an extended sick leave in response to self-quarantineing, childcare, family member care with regards to the coronavirus. Staff has been distributed information sheets regarding symptoms to look for. There's also been directives given to, should a staff member come to work sick, department heads have been given the authority to send them home. If someone develops an illness over the day, again, department heads have been given the discretion to send them home. Really looking to be as proactive as we can, but still maintain operations to the extent we possibly can. With that, there are some slight operational changes. Chief Grissom informed me that based upon the type of call, under medical circumstances, if flu-like symptoms are reported or in a medical care facility where there are trained doctors, nurses on staff that could provide more care above and beyond what an officer could, our officers are not responding to those calls. It is strictly fire EMS personnel. So with that, we are making small operational changes in-house to the extent we can, again, without upsetting overall operations and service delivery to the community. That said, this continues to literally change hourly, and so we are adapting as quickly as we can. I would like to say we are, I have been in constant contact with Mequon, Thievesville, Cedarburg, Soffield, and Port Washington about the efforts they are taking, and we are right on par with them, if not a little bit ahead of the curve, so to speak, with regards to the preventative measures we are taking. I will say this, we have been in communication via the website and social media. Reactions so far have been very favorable and understanding to the closures or postponements or limited access that we have put out there and, I guess, advertised, if you will, to date. So that is very much appreciated from the community as we look to not only provide services, but protect our workforce as well. That is the high level of where we are at today with regards to the village's response to the coronavirus. As village president Brunkwell mentioned, we did have a proclamation earlier today regarding a public health emergency. And again, that is primarily for eligibility for programs in the future. But should we need, we can exercise emergency powers if needed. That is where we're at right now.
All right, thinking in addition to that, the legislation has to be for the Senate tonight for possible action could possibly impact the village as far as the employers being on the hook for providing that additional two weeks of paid leave. So that was one of the things that was driving us to really restrict the operation and capital purchases at this point. We don't know what else is going to impact us from a financial perspective, but we still are responsible for, at least as it stands right now, for levy limits and for our expenditure restraint. I have been in touch with Aurora Hospital. I will continue to be in touch with them, making sure that any programming that they do or PR that they wish us to collaborate with, we will continue to do that. I actually have another meeting with them this Wednesday just to make sure that we are all on the same page and communicating the same messages. Questions?
I have a few. So with the police department saying that they don't feel that they're ready to go into a situation with somebody who's sick, and I understand that, does the fire department have what they need to go into a home to collect somebody, so to speak, with isolation equipment, gowns, masks?
I have been in contact with Chief Rice Abaltis. He does have a level of comfort with the equipment they have. I have not received any further requests for additional. They do have all of the preventative measures available to them. But if, should they need more, obviously, we can entertain that direction. I mean, that's absolutely a possibility, for sure.
And I guess what's important to me is that they have exactly what they need per the recommendations of the medical director and Aurora, which I'm assuming that you may talk about on Wednesday too.
So we met with Chief Grissom and Chief Rice several weeks ago to start this process. And Chief Rice has actually submitted a document of the preparations that they have done. He has been in touch with Dr. Zills as far as, again, coordinating efforts and things like that. And at this point, like Administrator Tyce mentions, he has a comfort level with where they're at at this point.
I'd like to make a comment about the library closing. John, I see you're no here. I guess the only thing I'll say about that is I know that the library is open almost every day, and I know that there are a lot of elderly people that go. It doesn't appear to me that there's a lot of people there at one time. I guess I worry about people going there on a daily basis who use the computer or stay there and read, things like that. And I don't know if this is something, I do see now that you've canceled the board meeting, I was going to ask if maybe at the board meeting you might talk about, I don't know, one day a week for people to come in and get a book or check something out. I mean, it could be two weeks, it could be longer, it looks like. So that's just something that I worry about, some of the citizens that spend a lot of time there.
So John, you can take that up with the library board, some feedback from the village board?
Yeah, it was a hard decision I took because I know how people value, you know, some of it, like starving for books, not everybody has books at all, maps and things, and movies, music, so. It's like we built people, we try, but we have about 350 people a day coming through the doors, and a lot of it's, some of it's in closed quarters with concentration activity at the desk. It seemed to be the right thing to do to diminish the hazards for everybody.
Well, and I hope that you, I was there Saturday. I didn't see any hand sanitizer at the checkout desk or anything. Those are basic things that you might be able to pick up.
We have, yeah, we have a job at the desk and a computer area.
Okay.
We've had it up to for a while.
Just realize, and I know trustee Harbeck is well aware, is that these coronavirus, they can sit on a vice or a book or a counter for up to two weeks and remain viable.
Right, and so.
You have to be careful.
Right, and some of the things, you know, that we're doing is that you need to actually wipe down the surfaces. So possibly that's something you guys could do for the next few days. Wipe down all the surfaces where people check out books. Take away all the extra things that you may not need that people need touch.
Yeah, we have guys in the staff using wipes throughout the day. The sanitary ones wipe it down the desk and phones and computer keyboards and so forth. Try to curb the spread.
So you can take that up with the library board. Obviously, the village board, we are going to err on the side of caution in everything that we do. I have no qualms about closing where we have the possibility of spread. Obviously, it's not only in the best interest of ourselves, our community, but also doing our part to contain this spread as much as possible. So that's the update. We will continue to update the webpage as we have information. But again, this is a very fluid situation, and it does change on a day-to-day basis.
I have one other thing for me. The only other thing I'll say is that I know that this was talked about early on a few weeks ago, and I guess I would ask that next time you clue the board in as to what was going on, maybe behind the scenes, to see something on Facebook posted first before the board got any official notice of what was going on was disturbing to me. I would like to think that, you know, when somebody calls us and says, "What the heck is going on?", we would have known about that a few weeks ago. I don't think any of us would disagree with the decisions that were made, but I do feel like the other five or six of us who sit up here who are elected had nothing to say about it, not that we would have disagreed. So please keep us posted before the fact.
Absolutely.
All right, President Brunkwell? I just have one question, just related to, and maybe Jesse can address this. What's the current thinking with respect to the upcoming election and the polls? And what's under consideration for handling, you know, the exposure and everything else that goes along with many people being in one small place?
Absolutely. Currently, by the feedback we've gotten from the Wisconsin Election Commission's, it's business as usual with regards to the election. That said, we are taking all the steps possible as far as getting the disinfecting wipes, having, looking to have gloves available for poll workers, looking to have masks available for poll workers to the extent we possibly can. We are going to look to protect our people and the citizens that come in to vote. But right now, we are really waiting on the state of Wisconsin to provide further guidance as to how to handle it outside of our own thoughts on, you know, keeping the distancing and... and preventive measures that we can take. Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
All right, thank you. We do have representation from police, fire, public works. Anybody else have anything that they wish to add, pass along, question regarding department and officers reports? Okay, let's move on to licenses. We have one person, and their place of employment is listed as far as approval of operator's license?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Move on to item nine, report of bills, entertaining motion for approval of village expenditures,
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion is second. As always, comments, questions, clarifications on the bills?
I have a couple. Page seven. Jesse, did we get an itemized report from House Unified from this? This is from January.
I would have to look back. That may have been something that was not set forth because of the transition in the accounting position. That has recently occurred. Staff has seen change over there, so I would have to look at my records. If it has not been distributed, I will make sure to get that to the board.
Okay. Page 11 for Officer Radke, uniform allowance, there's no description of what that was. I'm just curious about that.
Unfortunately, with all things public health related, I did not, I thought about that as far as getting that breakdown. I have not been able to pull that. I will make sure to report that to the board.
Okay. And kind of the same thing on the second batch, page one, from calls, all the items listed, four from the fire department, one from police department, alterations, uniform allowance, who, what?
I can, absolutely, I will report to the board.
And under strikers also, uniform allowance, no nay, no?
Absolutely.
So for those reasons, I'm just going to vote in one of the bills, those few things that I mentioned.
Other questions? All right, motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Item 10, obtain a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank you.